All right, well, good evening. It is after seven, so I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 26, 2016 Gardner Planning Commission Meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and state their pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have roll call, starting on my right.
Freeman here.
Barber here.
Limmer here.
Mater here.
Lovella here.
Austin here.
Corvus President. Before we move into the consent agenda, I would like to introduce our newest member of the Planning Commission staff, Ms. Christie Hatley. Welcome. Move into the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each planning, to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any members of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Is there any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Lovella with a second by Limmer that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Item number one of new, old business zoning ordinance text amendment, that has been withdrawn. We'll move into new business. Item 1A and 1B. Item 1A being a Copper Springs located near University Drive and West 160 Third Street, PP-15-03. Consider a preliminary plat for Copper Springs and approximately 34.45 acre, single-family residential subdivision submitted by David Rhodes for Gardner Property Partners, property owner of record. We have a staff report this evening.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Chad Barber, Planner One, to present these two items tonight, items 1A and 1B on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. With this first slide, we've got an aerial photo and of the, of the area and the application area. Two things of note on this particular slide, the city limit line is designated with the blue line. And the red line is the actual application area, which consists of preliminary plats for Copper Springs 4, 5, and 6. This basically this, this is a quarter section that we're looking at entire, in its entirety, to be the north, northeast quarter of Section 13. Okay, moving on, we've got some field photographs. These are taken, this one here is looking north at University Drive. The subject property is located both on the left hand and in the right hand of the actual University Drive. In the background, you can see a development that's occurring with the Copper Springs 3 development, those houses there. We've issued building permits for, and they're currently under construction. Moving on, this is looking east at 162nd Terrace. You can see some of the existing infrastructure, infrastructure that's in place with the fire hydrant and asphalt road there. This would be a part of what you're looking at here, where this would be Copper Springs 5. Now, this is looking west down 162nd Place, as the road curves around and it ends in a cul-de-sac. Then you can see the presence of the asphalt road and fire hydrant. This is looking west at the APAC, APAC Access Road, which is near the 163rd or half mile alignment in this particular area. It's taken from University Drive. I'll go into that in a little bit. That concludes the, the field photographs. On this particular slide, you see the three individual preliminary plats delineated with different colors. You see Copper Springs 4 with the blue boundary, Copper Springs 5 with the red boundary, and Copper Springs 6 with the green boundary. In total of the three plats, there are 119 lots that are proposed. The breakdown for each subdivision for Copper Springs 4, there's 28 lots that it's proposed. With Copper Springs 5, there's 35 lots that are proposed. And with Copper Springs 6, there's 56 lots. Now, the current zoning is R1, which is single-family residential, which is already in place. Improvements are planned consisting of public roads, stormwater, extension of sewer and water mains. Now, the sewer in this particular area is administered through the Johnson County Wastewater District, so they do the administration and operation of the wastewater services. Another note, with Copper Springs 3, which you can see basically between the blue area that's bounded by the blue, blue line and the green, that's Copper Springs 3. That was recorded in 2015, there was 32 lots, and we're, as shown from the earlier slides, it's currently under development with building permits issued. Two existing road, road names were recently changed as a part of Copper Springs 3, but this affects Copper Springs 4 and 5 as well. The two changes were from 163rd Street to 162nd Terrace, and the other one is 163rd Terrace to 162nd Place. Basically, on review by staff of, of these preliminary plats, we noticed that there was an incongruency, if you will, with some of the existing addressing and road, road naming structure that's the city has in its addressing plan, the 2003 plan. And so, we were able to get those corrected with filing an affidavit with the Johnson County RTA, and we've been notifying the owners of the lots. There's 15 lots in total, as far as Copper Springs 3, to let them know of the two road name changes. All bulk, meaning minimum dimensions, width, those types of things, size of the zoning ordinance are met for the three proposed subdivisions, except for the lot depth between proposed lots 104 and 105, which is found in Copper Springs 6, which is the, the green area, it's kind of over on the west side. The zoning ordinance requires an average depth on a residential lot of 115 feet, and for that particular lot line or property line, it's listed at 114.32, so it's a little bit short. We believe this can be remedied with a condition, which we'll see here in a moment, that's been made to the attention of the developer, and they believe that's something that they can, they can meet. None of the proposed plats are designated or located in a designated 100-year floodplain. All proposed road right-of-way widths meet the city subdivision regulations, that's Section 17.15.100, uppercase B, number three lowercase letter A, which would be 60 foot of width for University Drive, because that's a collector type of road. And for the other roads, these would be 50 feet of width for road right-of-way. The developer has indicated that the use by APAC Quarry, which is located in the southwest quarter of the area. Kelly, could you go to slide number three, please? Thank you. So you'll see, basically, in the very lower left-hand corner of this particular slide, that would be the APAC property. It's actually the southwest quarter of that Section 13. And the developer had indicated to us that local roads are being used for ingressing and egressing to the quarry. They do have the quarry, they, they do have an access easement, and they've had it since 1951. So what they're currently doing is they're accessing, they're using University Drive, and they're using, which basically would be the 163rd Street alignment, and they're going in on the east side of their property, be off the west side of University Drive as access. So the city is concerned that this might lead to a accelerated deterioration of University Drive, and so we've got kind of a soft date to speak with APAC sometime by the end of February, to see if we can have talks with them, see if they would be amenable to moving their, their truck traffic to, on the west side of that property, which would basically be off Gardner Road or Center Street, as opposed to coming off University Drive. So, we'll see how that goes. Appropriate city staff has reviewed the proposed stormwater improvements and finds that it meets city standards for drainage. Regarding utilities, appropriate city staff has reviewed the proposed development and finds it also meets city standards. Various utility easements, excuse me, utility easements of various widths are proposed throughout the three developments. An excise tax is levied with the act of plating the properties into the city, but this will be applicable in the final plat stage, so we'll see that here in a little bit when I present on the final plat for Copper Springs 4, but this is not done at preliminary plat stage. Kelly, could you go to slide number nine, please? Thank you. Having said that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat for Copper Springs 4, 5, and 6, subject to the following one condition, condition number one, extend the property line between lots 104 and 105 to 115 feet, and that would be in Copper Springs 6. Having said that, I'll move on to the final plat then, which is the case, final plat 15-06, which would be Copper Springs number 4. As stated earlier, it's for 28 lots, consisting of 9.5 acres. Roads to be dedicated with the final plat would be 162nd Terrace, 162nd Place, and 162nd Court. You can see those labeled on this particular slide. I guess also to say the north half of 163rd Street, the south half of 163rd Street, just south of that, that, that blue-green line there, that was dedicated with the University Park Edition subdivisions back in 2007. As stated earlier, there's an excise tax that would have to be paid with the recording of a final plat, so for Copper Springs 4, that fee total would be $71,264.16. Two other things of note regarding parks and recreational improvements. Kelly, maybe I can have you go back to slide number three.
I'm going to show you.
There we go, thank you. During past developments of Copper Springs, on this particular slide, on the very left-hand side, you'll see the blue line, which is the city limit line. It was indicated on the city's park master plan for a future trail in that particular location, but it was agreed to when the past development occurred, that perhaps the best location for the trail in this particular area for city would be more to the east along the wooded and kind of the area where it's actually it's a drainage area that leads drainage over to Gardner Lake, which basically on this particular map is shown where it's, it's got the letter A, the green color, which is designated the ag zoning in the city. So, on January 5th of 2015, not 2016, but last year, January 5th, the Gardner City Council initiated an amendment to the 2009 Parks Master Plan that would allow for an alternate location for the future trail in the northeast portion of this northeast quarter of the section, which is Section 13. And this, and then on January 4th of this year, Jeff Stewart, the city's Park and Recreation Department Director, and the developer's engineering consultant, Mr. Jim Long, met to discuss this trail relocation. What came out of that particular meeting is that Mr. Long agreed that the trail, to add the trail with a future revised layout so the city could review and respond. So, the condition of approval, and we'll see that in just a moment, is that the applicant shall submit a conceptual trail location for the northeast portion of the northeast quarter of Section 13 Township 14 South and Range 22 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian. And the last thing of note here, in my notes, it's item number seven, but the city's 2014 Comprehensive Plan calls for a collector type of road along basically the 163rd Street alignment, which is the half-mile line between 159th Street and 167th Street in an east-west orientation. So, to ensure a vehicular connection point in the future with Moonlight Road, we've had a meeting with the developer, and he's agreed in principle to provide this future road connection with a future Copper Springs, or if we have some other name development. And I think I'll go to the last slide, which would be slide number 11. Thank you. So, having said that, staff recommends to, to the Planning Commission approval of final plat, final plat 15-06 for Copper Springs 4, and forward it to the city council with a recommendation for approval and acceptance of easements and road right-of-way dedications, subject to the following conditions. Letter A, all conditions or condition of the preliminary plat shall be met. Item B, prior to the release of the final plat for recording, the required excise tax shall be paid. Item C, the applicant shall submit a conceptual trail location for the northeast portion of the northeast quarter of Section 13 Township 14 South, Range 22 East of the Sixth Principal Meridian. And item D, the applicant shall agree to, in principle, to provide a vehicular connection point in conjunction with a future Copper Springs development to Moonlight Road to augment traffic connectivity of the vicinity. And that would conclude the presentation, unless you have any questions for me, for staff.
Great, Chad, thank you.
Thank you.
I think what we'll do now, a little out of practice, guys, not having a meeting in December, I didn't read these together, even though Chad presented them together, as he always does, so thank you, Chad, for rolling with that. Let's see if the applicant is here with us this evening and has anything he'd like to add. We're only talking right now about item 1A, and then we'll have Planning Commission discussion and questions regarding the preliminary plat, and then we'll move into final.
My name is David Rhodes, 335 West Madison, Gardner, Kansas. I really don't have any comments about the preliminary plat, my comments are more about the final plat.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so with that, Commissioners, questions or comments for staff or the applicant regarding the preliminary plat? There are none. I would entertain a motion on item 1A.
I move the Planning Commission approve preliminary plat PP-1503 for Copper Springs 4, 5, and 6, subject to the following condition. Extend the property line between lots 104 and 105 to 115 feet, within Copper Springs 6. We have a motion made by Limmer with a second by Freeman, that the Planning Commission approve preliminary plat PP-15-03 for Copper Springs 4, 5, and 6, subject to the following condition, one, extend the property line between lots 104 and 105 to 115 feet. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
So, then, new business item being 1B, FP-15-06. Consider a final plat for Copper Springs 4, an approximately 9.50 acre, single-family residential plot submitted by, plat, sorry, submitted by David Rhodes for Gardner Property Partners, property owner of record. Now would be the time for questions from the Commissioners, for either staff or the applicant. Anything from the applicant?
David Rhodes again, 335 West Madison, Gardner, Kansas. The thing that I would really like the Planning Commission to consider, and I would really strongly suggest, that, that APAC road be relocated. As, as this continues to develop, I would hate to see 163rd Street going to Moonlight and becoming the access. As we finish University Drive to the north, that also is going to contribute, you know, contribute to some heavy truck traffic, and as this thing evolves into more children, I just see that as a real issue that, I don't know if they're on a special use permit or conditional use permit, but if in any way I could encourage you to push them to move it toward Gardner Road, I would really appreciate that. I think it would be good for the subdivision, as well as safety of the, of the overall community. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to add, other than we're fine with everything proposed.
Does APAC have access on the east side now, at all?
I, I know they have a gated rock road, and, and I'm sure there's some water issues, but they've got plenty of rock to build that.
Questions?
Any questions of me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that is a good suggestion. I don't know if that's perhaps something that can be added as an additional?
I think it's, it's beyond what we're doing with the plat, especially since it's road development itself, so I think it's beyond what we can do with this tonight, but definitely, I, I agree wholeheartedly, and something that both staff and council will probably have to consider, the way best to handle that. And I don't think it can be addressed in what we have tonight.
I don't think it, yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, I agree completely, but.
But how can we make that work?
And will be kept apprised based on what's talked about in your meeting?
Yes, Commissioner Barber, we can, we can do that, as, as time goes on, I'd love the, the commission to know what we learned, as far as the progress, being able to move that, that traffic over on the, to the west side, as opposed to going through the east side.
Okay, there. We don't have other questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission approve final plat FP-15-06 for Copper Springs 4, and forward it to the city council with a recommendation for approval and acceptance of easement, subject to the conditions as described.
Second.
We have a motion by Freeman with a second by Austin, that the Planning Commission approve final plat FP-15-06 for Copper Springs 4, and forward it to the city council with a recommendation for approval and acceptance of easement, subject to the conditions as listed below. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
New business, item number two. Hold a public hearing and consider adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment, including the adoption and incorporation by reference of the I-35 and Gardner Road interchange subarea plan by Planning Commission Resolution PC-16-01. Presentation this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Michelle Loniger, Principal Planner. What you have before you tonight is something a little different, something a little new. What we have got here is a subarea plan. Really what this is, is, is a more detailed, comprehensive plan for a specific section, either of the city or of city slash growth area that we're looking at. What we did is we began the process in spring of last year, held five stakeholder meetings, which included different activities where we were gathering information, we were having the stakeholders draft future land use maps, take a look at some, a land use map draft, and then in December, we provided a draft, full draft of the plan for public input. And that is actually not what you see tonight. We've done some revisions, and that is what you have seen. So that's actually a second draft of the plan. From here on out, obviously, tonight, we have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and then after the Planning Commission takes action, that will go to the, oh, that says wrong, to the council, no, the Planning Commission recommendation will go to the council for action. It's a similar process that the comprehensive plan went through, same process. Just to go through a summary of the plan, the plan is three sections, an introduction and existing conditions, and recommendations. The introduction section has an overview and purpose, planning process and public input, description of the planning area, background, and then the policy framework. The existing conditions section has existing character, land use zoning patterns, infrastructure, environmental conditions, and community facilities. The recommendations section includes a vision statement, goals and policies, future land use and development principles.
Questions?
Any questions of me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that is a good suggestion. I don't know if that's perhaps something that can be added as an additional...
I think it's beyond what we're doing with the plat, especially since it's road development itself, so I think it's beyond what we can do with this tonight, but definitely, I agree wholeheartedly in something that both staff and council will probably have to consider the way best to handle that, and I don't think it can be addressed in what we have tonight.
I don't think it, yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, I agree completely.
But how can we make it work?
And will be kept apprised based on what's talked about in your meeting?
Commissioner Barber, we can do that as time goes on, let the Commission know what we learned as far as the progress, being able to move that traffic over on the, to the west side versus going through the east side.
Okay, there. We don't have other questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission approve final plat FP dash one five dash oh six for Copper Springs four and forward it to the City Council with a recommendation for approval and acceptance of easement, subject to the conditions as described.
Second.
We have a motion by Freeman with a second by Austin that the Planning Commission approve final plat FP dash one five dash zero six for Copper Springs four and forward it to the City Council with a recommendation for approval and acceptance of easement, subject to the conditions as listed below. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
New business item number two: Hold a public hearing and consider adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment, including the adoption and incorporation by reference of the I thirty-five and Gardner Road interchange subarea plan by Planning Commission Resolution PC dash one six dash zero one. Presentation this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Michelle Loniger, Principal Planner. What you have before you tonight is something a little different, something a little new. What we have got here is a subarea plan. Really what this is, is a more detailed, comprehensive plan for a specific section, either of the city or of city slash growth area that we're looking at. What we did is we began the process in spring of last year, held five stakeholder meetings, which included different activities where we were gathering information, we were having the stakeholders draft future land use map, take a look at a land use map draft, and then in December, we provided a draft, full draft of the plan for public input, and that is actually not what you see tonight. We've done some revisions, and that is what you have seen, so that's actually a second draft of the plan. From here on out, obviously, tonight we have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and then after the Planning Commission takes action, that will go to the, oh, that's what's wrong, to the council, no, the Planning Commission recommendation will go to the council for action. It's a similar process that the comprehensive plan went through, same process. Just to go through a summary of the plan, the plan is three sections, an introduction and existing conditions and recommendations. The introduction section has an overview and purpose, planning process and public input, description of the planning area, background, and then the policy framework. The existing conditions section has existing character, land use zoning patterns, infrastructure, environmental conditions, and community facilities. The recommendations section includes a vision statement, goals and policies, future land use and development principles, future utilities and implementation, and then throughout the plan, you'll see tables and maps, and then at the end, there's an appendix with all of the summaries from all of the stakeholder meetings and pictures of the land use maps that were produced at those. Thought it was pretty important to include our base foundation for all the information in the plan. Here is one of the maps out of the plan, this is the very first map, it just shows where our planning area is in relation to the city as a whole. The key thing to remember throughout this process is that the plan does not annex property and it does not rezone property. The plan is a plan for development within the city, when and if the property comes into the city. Additionally, while the planning area includes some properties within the city of Edgerton, the plan does not affect or plan for these properties. Here's a closer version, the planning area is just over two thousand acres, the western boundary is Waverly Road, the northern boundary is generally one eighty-third Street, felt that really there's no need to include developed lots and properties within the planning area, so it jogs around some of that. Eastern boundary is Moonlight, and then the, excuse me, southern boundary is one ninety-ninth Here's a very colorful map, it is the future land use map, let's see if that's labeled The legend describes what the different colors mean, low density, medium density, high density, something that we've changed from what's outlined in the comprehensive plan, we've kind of expanded some of those land use categories. In the comprehensive plan, we have a light industrial slash business office park, pulled those apart and identified those separately, also included a heavy industrial designation. The red, you see regional commercial, that was included already, carried over from the comprehensive plan. The public semi-public parks and rec and open space, and you'll see the property that is to the west is Edgerton, even though it's within the planning area. And just to give you kind of a comparison, what's on the left is the future land use map out of the plan, the right is the future land use map out of the comprehensive plan. So you can see, the black line outlines the area that we're talking about in the comprehensive plan, you can see generally where the area is. A lot of the use, the land use designations out of the comprehensive plan transferred over, we did change some of them slightly, and then obviously expanded them into the areas that were identified as either part of that southeast quadrant future area or agriculture, rural residential. And even though they're not the same, tonight is part of the comprehensive plan amendment that you'll see, we're not proposing to update this map, the future land use map at this time, that you'll notice it carries through to the implementation, and we would, since we have a second plan following next month, we would bring back a comprehensive plan amendment to the land use plan in the comprehensive plan as one big amendment later this year. Here is one of the other maps in the third section, this shows proposed future roads, and it shows future sewer areas. This really gets into an idea of how we can sewer the area to the other side of the interstate. And this, all of our stakeholders will, that are here, will notice that this is a new map compared to the version of the plan that they saw. I included this after we had released the first version of the plan to help clarify that future land use map, even though it does actually show this, at the scale it's zoomed out to, and the future road designations are shown dotted, I found it useful to include this. Closer zoomed up to the interchange to show the concept of reworking the interchange to incorporate those roundabouts, so that we can incorporate the on and off ramps, Gardner Road and one ninety-first Street, and then the future new arterial on the south side, so that those intersections will function a lot better. Just going to go through some of the goals, these are broad statements of ideal future conditions that are desired by the community, provide an upgrade to the city's transportation network to promote economic development. Goal two, provide infrastructure and public facilities to support the city's economic development. Economic development is really a large goal of the council at this point. Create quality development through streetscape design and site standards, that comes a lot out of the comprehensive plan today. Goal four, maintain the rural character in existing areas until a time that municipal services and market factors allow urban densities to develop. We're not looking to go out there and annex and zone and develop everything at once. We want this to happen logically, so that we can serve people when they're within the city, but, you know, if they're not within the city, or they're not developing their property, but they are within the city, we want to make sure that they can maintain that rural character. Goal five, protect and respect the natural systems currently in place and expand the natural and recreational facilities with development. Real important, you protect those floodplains and waterways, they help clean the water, they help create open space, they help actually create places that we can run our utilities along, lots of, lots of reasons to protect those. I'm not going to go into all the plan policies, there's a handful of pages of those. Generally, these are shall, should, and encourage statements, the shall be the most strong. We have policies regarding just general policy statements, residential, commercial, industrial, business office park, public facilities, park recreation and open space, gateways, transportation facilities, and utilities. Then the implementation of the plan, these are the things that need to happen after the plan is adopted. It's talked about in the plan that the utility transportation master plans don't really address the area on the south side of the interstate, those need to be updated to offer projections for, and planning for that side. I know a couple of the utility plans, they're in the, they're working to obtain a consultant's update, those plans right now. And then the zoning ordinance to incorporate a new business office district zoning, we would anticipate needing to do that to coincide with our business office land use. Update the comprehensive plan, land use map, I already discussed that. Work with the KDOT and other potential sources for funding to upgrade and reconstruct the I thirty-five or Gardner, excuse me, Gardner Road interchange. Acquire right-of-way for future arterial street alignment, acquire easements for future sanitary sewer veins, those are, those are both important if we, as a city, wish to develop on the other side of the interstate. Begin conversations with property owners and potential developers who encourage annexation. That is something that comes right out of the existing comprehensive plan, and all, and that's something that council has already directed staff to start working on, so I'll talk more about that when I talk about the comprehensive plan amendment. Update the plan to reflect the new zoning information after the adoption of land development code. We want to make sure that any changes we make to the code are then consistent with what's put in the plan, it lists out land use and zoning designations, we just want to make sure that we don't adopt a plan and then immediately have people look at it and go, this isn't relevant anymore, and it was just adopted last year or this year. Develop streetscape standards along arterial streets, that also comes out of the comprehensive plan, that talks about gateways and improving the looks of arterial streets for major gateways into the city. On to the comprehensive plan amendment, these are the two pages of the comprehensive plan that would be affected, page fifty-one and fifty-two, it's the southeast quadrant market determined area, and at the time of adoption, the comprehensive plan really talked about this area being long-range. Council has changed their priorities at this point in time, and so a lot of this information doesn't really apply anymore, and, excuse me, the changes proposed to this will allow the approved subarea plans to be incorporated into the plan, and given that more teeth for the goals and policies for that area. Proposed changes, removing text that discusses the area as unknown or at long-term growth, and include language to introduce the subarea plans, incorporate them by reference, and any applicable policies in the section will either remain that one section about annexation or be incorporated into the plan policies, that was the policy I discussed about starting to work with property owners about annexation agreements and such. With all of that, staff recommendation is that the staff recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, adopt resolution number PC sixteen dash oh one, adopting amendments to the city of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and the I thirty-five and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, forwarding a recommendation to the governing body to approve amendments to the city of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and the I thirty-five and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan.
Madam Chairman, if I could offer maybe just a friendly amendment, this is kind of just a legal recommendation. Whenever we engage in extra territorial planning, meaning planning of unincorporated areas, by statute, specifically KSA twelve dash seven four seven, the Planning Commission is supposed to express an opinion that the area outside of their planning area forms the total community of which the city is a part, so I've got some suggested language to add a new section to, basically making that express finding, and that language would be that the Planning Commission determines that the unincorporated territory, which is the subject of the present subarea plan, forms part of the total community of which the city is a part, and accordingly, it is appropriate for this Planning Commission to adopt a comprehensive plan for the development of such unincorporated territory. I can provide that language to you.
That'd be great, thank you. Okay, with that, we will now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, or an individual representing a group is allotted seven minutes. Got a lot of folks here in the audience tonight, so comments are appreciated.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble peering out here.
I'm sorry, is that better?
It's much better.
Okay, great, these microphones were all lopsided when we got here.
Do we have an opportunity to address this?
Absolutely, this is your time for public hearing, so please state your name and address for the public record.
Leonard Fawcett, and I'm with the owners of the Highview One property, and it's actually here on the screen, if you can see Highview Drive, it is in yellow, right at the south side of that. The new Collector Street will be, is proposed to go right alongside the I thirty-five right-of-way and right along the side of our property, so is that, are we, can, I assume you all can see what I'm looking at on the screen? Okay, very good. Well, about a decade ago, this particular piece of property was annexed into the city, and at that time, it was very important to us to agree to annexation, that we would have that C three zoning, now that's what it's currently zoned at, and I'm not sure how to go back to page two five, two dash five, but if you go, and, Michelle, are you able to help me with that? How do we get to two five on the, on the screen so that we can all see that?
Think he's talking about the existing zoning in the packet, Michelle, can you guess me?
I think we have it here.
Do they all have a copy of the plan?
Okay, well, if you go to page two dash five, that very property, you'll see currently is zoned C three. Is that, can everybody see that?
That's correct.
Okay, so now, in this new Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, it is, the plan that's being presented, is that this would be rezoned to low-density residential. Well, now that's something that we have strong feelings about, that we don't want to see that changed. We asked the question in previous opportunities to talk, what was the logic behind that? And we've never understood even what the logic was and why to change that. We don't think it would be a good idea, I can't imagine someone wanting to build a house right along the I thirty-five corridor, and the way that land actually lays it, it just wouldn't be potential, a nice potential place for low-density residential. But we want to maintain the C three zoning, so I'm not sure if this is the place and the setting to discuss this, but we wanted at least be heard on that, that we want to cooperate with all of this infrastructure adjustments that's been presented, we think it's all, many, many great ideas here, but this one thing is very important to us. And so, as I mentioned, we don't understand the logic behind changing the zoning to low-density residential, especially when it was our plan a decade ago, and the city, city's plan as well, that that would be zoned commercial. So that was the point we wanted to make, we strongly would ask the Commission to not change that to low-density residential. Is that satisfactory? Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yep, you're at the right place.
Any questions you have of me, please? Okay, well, thank you very much for letting us address this, and we'll just try to continue communicating on this as much as possible. Okay, thank you.
Any others wishing to speak, please approach the podium and be heard, this is your time.
My name's Lynn Baker, I'm with Crown Realty, I'm a landowner, one hundred and ninety-ninth Street, and I work with Michelle on the Advisory Committee for the new subdivision regulations and so on. Couple of things, Michelle and I have already talked about this, but the big thing for me is very similar to what the last gentleman said up there. I own eighty-six acres down near Waverly and one hundred and ninety-ninth, where the green floodway goes through there, there's eighty-six acres there, and I bought that ground well before the intermodal, with the idea of putting a high-end motorhome park in there. And of course, then they announced the end. And of course, then they announced the intermodal, so we decided to kind of wait to see what's happening. And of course, we do have it on the market now, but I don't think that's a place for a single-family against the highway with all the intermodal buildings across the highway. It just, you know, it'd be hard to sell a residential house up there along the highway. So I think, I ask you to reconsider showing that as something other than single-family residential or residential period. I really would like to see that the city show a corridor all the way along I-35, a frontage road, designed such that you could double-load it with commercial buildings on both sides, similar to what you see out on I-70 from Independence to Blue Springs and all the commercial buildings that are out there. All this light industrial here, I really think you're going to have a hard time ever getting that developed, that big a space into industrial there. I mean, I, I think what the city needs, we need more higher-end residential development in this city. You can't buy a $300,000 or $400,000 house here. And the amount that's shown here, there's not, there's not too much land set aside for, for single-family development. I mean, I think you should have a large, much larger area of single-family closer to, closer to the highway, obviously not on the highway. So, and only other comments that I had, and I may not understand, Michelle, what, what the intention is here, but with those roundabouts, it looks to me like you're soliciting truck traffic to come from the intermodal onto Gardner Road, which I can't imagine if that's the case, why you would want to do that. I mean, those trucks are not going to be a positive thing for the city. You need to have those trucks go where they were intended to go, down Homestead, instead of dumping them onto Gardner Road. I mean, that, you're talking about high first cost, you're talking about high maintenance, and those trucks aren't going to bring any value to the city. Now, maybe that's not the intention, Michelle, for the trucks to come, just maybe the workers that work there or is on 191st end of the roundabout.
I think the potential is there. That's not the intent, is to redirect the traffic from Homestead to Gardner Road. But we already have some industrial type of uses along that road that we would still need to maintain some sort of connectivity for them. There's also the potential to direct some of the truck traffic off of 56 through downtown.
Well, don't you think that truck traffic should go down 199th Street? That right now, they're going to go down 199th to Homestead, probably. But all this truck traffic that's going to go south, southeast, you know, the intermodal, and every way everything's set up, you're dumping all that traffic onto I-35 and then 435, which is already congested. Why not let those truckers, well, they're already doing it, they're going down 199th, they're going down 223rd, cut, cutting across so they can go south rather than dumping them up in the city? It would seem to me that that would be a good thing to try to direct them down 199th from Homestead, if it's going to go that way. And not dump them, not dump all this traffic back on I-35 that's going a different direction. They're going to try to find a way to cut, cut the corners, which they already do. And of course, they're tearing up the roads and whatever. Anyways, I appreciate your time. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Tishney, and I am here to make some comments on the 60 acres at the southwest corner of 191st Street and I-35. This property has been in our family for quite some time, and I think it's an important piece both to our family as well as to the City of Gardner. In your subarea plan, you actually described this property as a gateway to the City of Gardner. And as the gateway, we have two primary concerns. The first is related to land use, and the second is related to access. As you can see in the map that you discussed earlier, the city planning staff has designated this property as regional commercial. However, this property is a transitional property, and we would understand that this market would dictate its future use. However, it was somewhat surprising to us to understand that the property immediately to the north of us was designated as heavy industrial. And this is concerning for several reasons. The first, as you know, and as we talked about, there was a community process where stakeholders met and submitted drawings with their anticipated use. Only one person designated that as industrial. Everybody else marked it as commercial. The second, it would be well-established with the planning, in the planning concept, that you would transition well from one zone to another. And on page 3.2 of your report, compatibility is discussed and the need to transition well from one area to another. Under the Gardner zoning code, a transition used to commercial would either be light industrial or a business office park, not heavy industrial. Your draft document states that this area is targeted for employment, commerce, and housing, and none of this sounds like heavy industrial to me. In fact, heavy industrial is described as heavy manufacturing, production, outdoor storage, distribution, rail yard, freight terminal, and salvage yard. We don't view any of those uses as consistent adjacent to commercial. So I would like to make sure that you guys would reconsider this designation and designate it as commercial or light industrial and not heavy industrial. And then our second concern is related to access. I appreciated what you said about making sure there is unimpeded access. And I'd just like to be on the record that we need to make sure there is clear access to 191st Street from I-35. If this property is to develop as we anticipate and as the city anticipates, this access is critical. Are there any questions?
Can I get your address for the public record?
17130 Antioch, Stilwell.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Barber with a second by Leimer that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, this is your opportunity for questions, comments, and discussion of this item.
It doesn't really sound to me like things have been hammered out quite as clearly between the public and the city, based on the public comment. Is there more opportunity to get that worked out?
This would be the opportunity. Can you change that back, Chad?
Okay.
If, if the planning commission wishes to change it based on public comment, that's something that you can do. You know, I can, I can give a little explanation about the areas that were discussed, if you would like.
Maybe.
Just some reasoning behind what we've done. And these were the people that I had had previous discussions with. And, you know, kind of give you the discussion that we had, if you would like.
That'd be great.
Can I, can I just make the quick point about process? Because I think the first gentleman that stood up and spoke asked that the property not be rezoned. And the, the second comment was, was similar. I just want everyone to know, I think you all know, but I want the public to understand that what we are doing tonight is not a rezoning of the property. This is just a future planning mechanism. And then for the, for the zoning on property to change, there is a zoning amendment process which you all are very familiar with. One of eight statutory, well, it's actually factors prescribed by Kansas law is conformity with the adopted comprehensive plan. So what this plan says is one factor used to determine whether or not it's proper for a property to be rezoned or not. There are seven other factors that you all are to consider when those come before you. I will also add that if the property owner opposes a rezoning, so in, in other words, if it was a city-initiated rezoning through a separate process, not this process, and the city wanted to, for example, in the circumstance of the first gentleman's property, which is zoned as C3, if it were, if the city made a unilateral motion to downzone the property to low-density residential, that property owner could file a protest petition, in which case it would have to pass by a supermajority to, to pass the governing body to have a different zoning designation. So it would take four out of five of the city council members, in essence, 80% to pass. So I just wanted everyone to understand what we're doing here tonight. But, but with that said, this is the time to plan, you know, the future land uses. So I think it's all worthy of discussion.
Thanks, Ryan. Well, our, our public hearing is technically closed, but seeing as we, I guess, per se, haven't gone too far on time, I would entertain a quick comment. Please keep it to a minute. You'll need to approach the podium. State your name and address for the public record, or else we can't get you on the. Yes, if you have a quick comment, I'll entertain it. We didn't get you along in the public hearing. They'll need to be quick, guys. Please and thank you.
Lynn Baker again. The problem that I see is when it goes in the comprehensive plan, it seems to become an excuse not to deviate from that later on. And that's, you know, that becomes an excuse. I've, I've been there before, not with you guys, but, you know, Spring Hill and some other places. So that's, that's the whole problem with it, otherwise.
I, I understand, and this is the appropriate time to bring it up. I just wanted everyone to understand that if it's passed here tonight, this comprehensive plan, that doesn't mean the zoning on your property is changed.
Right, no, I understand that.
Absolutely. This is just a plan. I'll entertain one more comment. Please keep it quick. Appreciate it. State your name and address for the public record.
I'm Mary Fran, 19880 South Gardner Road. And if you look at the property at 199th and Gardner Road, there is an 80-acre tract of ground that we did subdivide through the county. It is a platted piece of property, and it adjoins the property to the west, which I believe is Mr. Baker's. I believe his is to the left of the greenway along the highway. But all that property in there is real residential. There are 10-acre tracts of ground. They've already been platted. Also, the other item, when we planted that property, Johnson County wanted to do one or two things. They proposed either we gave up ground for a park or we paid money. They weren't interested in us giving up the ground, so we paid money. So we really are not interested in even putting a greenway or a park through there. And that would be that green that you see coming from Gardner Road, leading down to 199th. That takes in a great deal of that property on the, actually, just a little on, not all of it, but a good piece of it, because there is an 80-acre tract in between us and the Nike. And that is a real estate developer that owns all that, and I don't know that he's anything with it. But that 80-acre is planted, and it is single-family dwelling in their 10-acre tracts. And we really don't want multiple-family dwellings to the west of us. So I agree with the flat that you have in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain one more comment. Again, this is outside of the public hearing, guys, but please state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Vernon Frayley, and I live in Wellsville, Kansas. I would never have annexed into Gardner if I would have known that it could be possible that it would not be C3. In other words, I was promised that I could have C3 zoning if I annexed into Gardner. And I, I did that. And then I also went to a city council meeting that the, the small road that came from the residential was denied because they didn't want to mix the residential with the commercial. And so their feelings in the city council was to keep this C3 also. And that was about, I want to say, six years ago. So that's this little, small road that comes into the C3. And I really would like to have the motion that we would have more time to talk with Michelle or someone about this before we have a vote, that we've really not had that much communication with Michelle. In fact, we've, we've not had much at all. So we'd like to be able to, one thing that's brought up by the other gentleman, that you had a, a advisory, commi, community advisory. I'd like to be able to sit down to where we can find out what, what's best for this property before we have a vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? We've heard a lot of good input from the public tonight. It's great to, to see and hear.
I think, just based off of a couple of things that we've heard in comments, I think it'd be important input from Michelle, if you could address, you know, we've got the, the low-density residential to the south side, and then we also haven't mentioned the heavy industrial. So really, after all the planning over the last almost year, what led us to those decisions? If you could provide a little more clarity there, it would help.
Sure. Starting up on the property just south of View High Drive, that property is currently identified in the comprehensive plan as low-density residential. That was a carryover. The property on the flip side carries a C3 zoning district. That property maintains that zoning and would be able to develop as commercial even though it's identified as low-density residential. They already have that zoning in place. So really, where this plan would come into play with that property is if they looked to rezone, or if the city looked to go in and rezone, as Mr. Vink had described. At this point in time, that is not something that the city is looking to do to go and change zonings and such. So as it sits today, they maintain their C3 zoning and could develop as such. Our comprehensive plan talks about regional commercial and community commercial zoning districts. And that really leads you to regional commercial being big box, auto-oriented type of commercial development that's drawing from the region. The community commercial districts are districts that are to be placed in between those larger areas to really target the neighborhoods so that you're not having to go, you know, to these large areas to get a gallon of milk or to get your dry cleaning done, or for your child to go to karate class. And the comprehensive plan really identifies these regional commercial as nodes, considering the node around this interchange and a node around the other interchange, downtown being something separate. That's why you see that compactness around the interchange and it not being spread out a long I-35. With that property being so close to this regional commercial, that is why staff carried that over from the existing comprehensive plan as low-density residential. The property around it is low-density residential or undeveloped. You really wouldn't want to identify that. In staff's opinion, we wouldn't recommend that you would change that to a commercial because of trying to keep that compact regional nodal development. And it's too close to that regional commercial to be a neighborhood commercial or community commercial district based on the comprehensive plan. While saying that, again, it already holds that C3 commercial zoning. So if they, if that collector was built in there and they came forward with a site plan for a commercial development, is. development, as long as that site plan meets the standards of the code, there's no way we can deny it, because they hold that zoning today. So, that's some of the background of why that is shown as a low-density residential, and why, even after discussions, why I didn't change it. And like I've said, it's in your hands now, so anything in the plan that you agree to change, that's fine. Moving on to property opposite corner, some of the same applies. The property's in the county. It didn't have a prior designation except for agriculture and rural residential in the plan today. Really, a lot of what that's based on is the floodplain that's there. That's a good support use, to be able to put trails and parks in there. If you'll look at, if you notice in the following map, that's got the future sewers. You see sewers running in there. Those are low points. We like sewer to run on its own versus to pump it. So, you kind of have those support uses. Also, the school's there. We like to be able to have kids walk to school, it's an elementary school, to have uses around that school to support it. Schools also act as a community facility. Kids go there and play. You can have meetings there. You can have picnics there. So, that's a lot of the reason behind why we identified residential in that area. 191st Street. With talking with the property owners on the south side, they had shown desire to make that entire property, which is currently designated as partially community commercial and partially as light industrial office park. They had shown a desire to have that all identified as community commercial. Staff felt that either way could be appropriate, so that was updated versus what was in the comprehensive plan. We did change the industrial to a heavy industrial. I mentioned that we had added that category. You already have some heavy industrial uses in place. You have a, even though it's zone commercial, a large truck semi towing and tow lot existing there. You also have a large tanker, sales, outdoor storage type of use. We went with heavy industrial. If the planning commission felt to change a portion of that to light industrial, I don't think staff would have heartburn over that. Or to regional commercial, you need to take into consideration, though, that what's there is a little more heavy, a little more intense. I would actually recommend that if you're looking at changing that area, not to change the entire area. Some of that along Waverly Road into the north and east, some of that area being what's adjacent, developed and such, and that would have different access, is probably more appropriate as a heavy industrial. But, you know, the industrial along 191st Street, I think it could go either way. We went with heavy industrial. Did I catch everything?
So, would it be a better transition, or, well, I mean, I don't know what you all would think, but what if just north of 191st Street, that smaller section, or the lower section is like a transition, light industrial section? Would that, would that help? Would that be better? Yeah, that whole section right there.
An option to consider. But, you know, keep in mind, guys, as we do this, and look at this, you know, this is a plan, right? We're not changing any of the zoning.
Right. I understand that.
Okay, so, just, all right, just making sure.
I understand that. I just wonder if it might help the property owners to have that be a little bit of, more of a transitional area? And if the city isn't going to get heartburn, or, you know, the council, nobody's going to get heartburn over it, then why not have it be a transitional section?
And I'll just, I'll play double advocate with you a little bit, Sheri, because I could then say, is that really a correct transition? When you're south of, south of I-35, south of Nike, on the west side of Gardner Road, you have residential lots, and I've seen these lots. They are, they're big size, you know, lots. And then directly to the east, you've got high-density residential. You're going to have a big apartment complex there. So, you know, I just, I'm not disagreeing, and I'm not trying to dissuade your opinion or thought process, you know, just, we're talking, so this is fine. But, you know, if we're going to piece-part it, you know, is this something we're to do tonight, or do we?
I don't know what to do here either, exactly.
I'm just trying to talk it through with you.
Want to help make property owners feel better about this, and I know it's just, it's just a plan. No, we're not rezoning anything. Nothing's going to change until somebody applies to have that changed, and it comes before us again at that point. But if we were to change anything on this plan, I think that property owners might appreciate that, at least. But I don't know if we can, I mean, I guess it's up to us if we're going to change it or not.
I think even if we try to change any piece, anywhere, in any quadrant, for any reason, down the road, when it does come time to consider rezoning for any kind of applicant, whatever we do now is really not going to matter.
Right.
I mean, obviously, we can color it whatever colors we want.
Right, ultimately not, no.
And then, you know, and then when the applicants come in, whenever they do, we don't really need to, I mean, we can consider this, but there's many other things Mr. Dink could consider at that time. I think I'm more inclined personally to just leave it as is, but maybe explore, or I mean, question a possible theoretical timeline where we might expect any kind of applicants. I mean, if we can say, you know, it's at least two years down the road, for example, that's totally hypothetical, that may give some of the property owners at least a little bit of breathing room to know that they can talk about it, say, I'll see the city, and I think since it's in the planning stages right now, I don't, I would be inclined to not really change much.
Okay. Yeah, go. I want to hear everyone's opinion. Go ahead, Brad.
I was just going to say, a couple of different thoughts. One, I agree that there are very, there's a list of things we have to look at when we are considering rezones and things of that nature down the road. But in the probably relatively short time that I've spent on the group here, on the council, or the commission, we always look at the colors and make sure that it's kind of in the general ballpark of where we're headed. So, it does factor in. It's not a definite, but it does factor in. I would personally be inclined to, or have a preference to see a little smoother transition between the regional commercial and the heavy industrial by perhaps putting some light industrial in there to the east of what's roughly Poplar Road. Just kind of lining up the brown and red there, yeah. I wouldn't go all the way across necessarily. I would just kind of keep it in that little square. The other, well, the point about the higher-density residential adjacent to the low-density residential is a good point that I hadn't thought of yet. The other question that I had was, if this proposed future ramp in the north portion off of I-35, currently, that's shown to be exiting I-35 into residential with this planning. And is that, our other two exits are into commercial areas and not residential areas. Do we really need, do we really want I-35 exits into residential? Now, granted, that's probably a long ways in the future if it happens, but are there any thoughts along those lines?
I think, I mean, specific to that individual, just having an access road at 193, I mean, from a time standpoint, we're not looking, I mean, we're maybe looking at 20-year plan even, to be able to finance. But I think there's a full comprehensive traffic study that would have to come into play there that's beyond, I think, even what the planning commission will be able to do, only because just being able to use fronting roads and things instead of cost-benefit analysis, and even going into, just like you said, feeding into a residential district directly off the interstate, if that's to the benefit, if it goes to both sides of the highway. So, I look at that and almost think it's, while it's in the plan here, it's so far out and so far from cost perspective, and KDOT would actually be the one to drive that more than anything, because it's an interstate. I don't take that side of it in too much to consideration. I did have one specific question as we look though at the heavy industrial. For heavy, what would be the proper zoning for heavy industrial? Would it be CP2, C3, C2, if someone were to come in for that sort of use?
If you look in the plan under the heavy industrial, it talks about M2 and MP2.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because of the existing zoning there with the small plot of agricultural, and then we have the C3, C3 buttered up to the C2. And I wonder if, kind of along the same lines as Brad, if transitioning that over to the west side where Poplar would extend down, as a light industrial might present some transition there. I know it doesn't quite meet some of what's existing there, but it does at least propose a slight transition into the heavy industrial, because, you know, the developments at that corner is going to lead itself to heavy industrial at some point. We won't be able to avoid that at all, but I think if we can transition that slightly, it will make for a better plan and allow for it. And I don't think, from a change standpoint tonight, we're trying to reinvent the wheel. We're just adapting, maybe to feedback and being able to address some of those concerns. The residential parts to the south, those are a little bit different, and all this is always dependent on someone coming in saying, "That's my land, and that's what I intend to do with it." So, that's the other fact that we don't talk about here. Somebody has to come and say, "I want to build medium-density apartments," otherwise, it's always just part of our plan and nothing beyond. But I think that light transitional, or that light industrial transition, fairly appropriate use there, we're not rezoning the C3 stations at this point, so I don't know that we do need to make an adjustment to that, but I think the transition part would be something worthy of consideration. I would ask then, are there objections on behalf of staff to what I just mentioned?
No, I don't, I, I could go either way that the planning commission directed as far as that heavy industrial, light industrial. You know, even if you felt it appropriate to extend that regional commercial more to the east and add light industrial, more of that full-out transition, you know, that could be appropriate, too.
From north to south, that whole, or, you know, like?
Yeah. If you're asking my opinion in changing that to light industrial, I would probably almost just draw that line straight down from the high-density residential to the north, draw that straight down and make that square right there. Light industrial, kind of a logical.
And I think that's what Brad suggested, was just create a block of light industrial to create that transition between the regional commerce.
But I understand your point, too, about, I don't know.
Well, yeah.
It seems like there should be a transition all the way up to 193rd Street.
But I think, yeah, too, you know, with how we've seen some applications here recently, I think maybe the more, the one that we're currently talking about right now, the piece of land that we're currently talking about right now, perhaps transitioning more from either a light industrial into the heavy, you know, remove that heavy industrial designation. I think that's maybe more of the urgent.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Like you guys were talking, I think there was consensus that, between he, yourself, and Brad. Mavella?
I agree with you.
Okay. I hadn't given you a chance to have the floor.
If I could add something. Something else we needed to take into consideration is that when these properties develop, we also have regulations in the zoning ordinance as far as setbacks and buffer yards and landscaping, and that will also help with some of those impacts.
Yeah, I have one more, as we're looking at this, and how do we expect, or should we expect there to be any impact when the land development, code rewrite, is completed, what we have, we see here? Are those two completely unique items, or do the, I mean, I've always assumed them to complement one another, and are we premature?
What you, I think what you need to do is think of this as an extension of what you did last year with the comprehensive plan. You're just looking at more of a 2,000-acre detail. So, no, I don't think, I think it's actually pretty logical. You do the comprehensive plan, you do the large-scale overarching goals and policies, and then you go in and do your subdivision and zoning regulations to implement those policies. And that's what we're doing with part of the, with a good portion of the rewrite, and some of my advisory committee members can attest to, that we have had discussions about, well, the comprehensive plan talks about this, and they did a complete analysis of where our existing zoning and subdivision regulations do not follow what is in the comprehensive plan. So, they're definitely tied together. They're tied together more like this than like this. But as far as implementing, or having an issue with the land use map and the new code, I don't think you're going to see any complex. Where we may need to do some updating is in the pages prior to this map, where it talks about the future land use and development principles, and it talks about the land use description. And I talked about that as part of the implementation, where we need to go back here and make sure that the zoning districts are correct, because we may have some different zoning districts. You just talked about implementing a new zoning district for the business office type of land use. So, I think, I don't think this map is going to have any impacts with the zoning district. The descriptions for the different categories are going to have some slight impacts. And we knew that going into here, and that's something we built into the implementation to go back and address. I don't think it's going to be significant.
What qualifies for low-density residential? What's the maximum threshold for that?
Currently, it's five or fewer dwelling units per acre.
So, the, in the research, the development that we just looked at for the community that, would that be considered low or medium density, the one that we just?
Copper Springs?
No, 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 not tonight.
At November's meeting?
At November's meeting, that would go around legacy fitness and things.
C2, or, I'm sorry, not C2. What's your, R2, thank you. R2. So, that would be like your medium density? What'd you call duplexes, medium density?
The duplexes and then all, I mean, is looking at this and then looking at the homes, the down homes that are around that, are those low or are those medium density?
I think it could, it can go either way. It depends on.
How they go.
That specific development is probably medium density. You can do duplex development as low-density residential. A lot of what people and what our code attach are the Um, a lot of what people and what our code attach are the structure types to the density, where low-density is single-family, medium-density is duplex, triplex, fourplex, high-density is apartments. What we're hoping with our new code is that we're changing the frame of mind a little bit, that you can get medium-density, single-family, where you're getting the smaller lots, they're a little more dense, um, but it's medium-density, it's not necessarily duplex, multifamily type of living. But you could also have low-density, technical low-density, but it could be duplex, or, you know, row homes, or where you're just grouping houses, and then you have a large amount of space around it. It's really, it's really how you use the property and how many units you get on the property, not necessarily what type of units and what form they're in.
Good explanation. Other questions or discussion points? If we do not have other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC-16-01, adopting the amendments to the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, and forwarding a recommendation to the governing body to approve the amendments to the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan with the following conditions. Adding, Section Two, the Planning Commission determines that the unincorporated territory, which is the subject of the present subarea plan, forms part of the total community of which the city is a part, and accordingly, it is appropriate for this Planning Commission to adopt a comprehensive plan for the development of such unincorporated territory.
Second.
I, I've got to read one other item, uh, we've got to address that, we're updating that with the light industrial.
Right.
With the plan updated to incorporate light industrial as a transition area between the areas directly north of 191st Street, with the border aligned with Poplar Street South Extended. That's good enough, Michelle.
Did you say what you wanted identified as?
As light industrial.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. And that's all I have.
I'll read it.
Read that back.
Kick him out of there.
So we have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Leimer, that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC-16-01, adopting the amendments to the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, and forwarding a recommendation to the governing body to approve the amendments to the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan and the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, along with Section Two, the Planning Commission determines that the unincorporated territory, which is the subject of the present subarea plan, forms part of the total community of which the city is a part, and accordingly, it is appropriate for this Planning Commission to adopt a comprehensive plan for the development of such incorporated territory, as well as, I should say, along with, the designation of light industrial within the planning area being north of West 191st and east of South Poplar Extended. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Did I read that back right?
You did.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, okay. Um, moving on, we do have one item under other business, land development code rewrite update. I think everyone will, um, have noticed, we had, uh, Michelle walk around, we have an updated memo here that, uh, Kelly will be speaking to on this evening.
Greetings to you. Um, this is just an update on the status of our land development code, and also the signed recommendation that you sent along to council. The great news is that we do have our first draft, working draft, we have received it, we have forwarded on to the technical committee and the advisory committee for their first review. Um, they will be having meetings with the consultants, um, February 5th and February 10th, just to kind of, um, work through some of those initial details before it comes to you in full for consideration at your next meeting. So we planned at the next meeting to have the consultant here, or at least have some materials from him, introducing the code to you, kind of outlining the changes that have occurred, and, um, of course, we will make that available to you before that time. Um, we do have a partial schedule available here for you. This will kind of need your input also on going forward, but at least the initial time period from January to March, we've kind of wanted to get that nailed down. And then, we'll see, after you see the draft, um, you'll be able to see better, maybe how long you want to discuss it, what your anticipation is, how, how many meetings you'd like to have, and we can work that out with the consultant and try to also coordinate it with council schedule, uh, for when your recommendation would go to them. So, um, just looking at that schedule briefly, um, I already discussed the first few dates. February 18th is when we would make that draft available, um, to you, to the governing body, to, um, the BZA. Um, and then February 23rd meeting, you would be given the opportunity to sort of look at it as a comprehensive poll, and then maybe, I'm suggesting focus also on signs at that time, since you've already had some discussions about signs, so that'd be a good jumping point into them. And then, um, we're anticipating, um, we would need some special meetings, hopefully you're up for that, um, just to kind of move this process along and get it adopted as soon as possible, maybe as soon as it may, if that works for you. Um, as far as the sign, uh, recommendation, uh, you had a really good recommendation that went to council, they, they had some concerns relating to those signs that we exempted, the signs that were under six square feet and displayed for no more than 14 days. Um, those would not have required a permit, but if they would have been, uh, displayed longer than that, they would have required a permit. And so that potentially could include things like political signs that are left up for a longer period of time. And so, um, there's a fix, uh, we could probably do for that, just dropping that 14-day, uh, I guess, that's kind of a categorical thing, just drop the time period and just say, if they're under six square feet, then they're able, they would, don't, don't need permits. Um, that is not something that we've been able to discuss with them or with you at this time, but we want to be able to readdress that when the whole, when you get to see the whole sign section. And, um, staff is also advised it'd be better to bring the sign section as a whole to council so that they can kind of see how everything fits together as well. So I'm up for your suggestions, comments, direction, uh, how, how you'd like to proceed with this.
I'll mention, just as a follow-up on the sign, are you looking for any point on the signs, just what was brought tonight?
Sure, anything is, is great.
You know, I understand councils, which is, I don't know that perhaps having a second class of permitting for signage that would encompass political signage isn't, is a negative. I don't know if there's actually some benefits to doing that, so that is maybe a little bit more regulated process. Maybe that actually would be a benefit in the timeline in place. That's not to say that that permit can't come with a 30 to 60-day expiration, and it comes at a tremendously low cost, really, nothing more than, to make sure, just like you register for office, to register that you're part of that process, I don't know that that's a bad thing. And waiving that completely and trying to absolve the 14 days, that opens up everything else that we don't want to be in that under-six-feet signage, and we'd have no way to enforce or regulate at that point. So that, as I see that, that's, that's my immediate thought, is, is if we remove it, then remove it from everything, and maybe that's not exactly the way. Of course, council makes it differently, but as I look at it, I, I don't think that accomplishes what we hope to with that part.
One other thing to note is that currently, technically, those signs would require a permit, and we just don't require them.
Right.
So, um, that, that's something we'll need to discuss further, and that's a very good point. So we'll, we'll try to think some more options, let's get that in.
Yes, I, I'd have to agree, I, I know, just, in, in, from my perspective, when the Planning Commission forwarded on the text amendment regarding signs in the first place, it seemed very vanilla. And it seems that, you know, now maybe council wants to take more of a, let's take the vanilla and add some chocolate and some mint and some other flavors, you're just, just muddying the waters again, when, you know, I initially thought the purpose was to clean and streamline process. Um, so I, I would just hate for council to, to have a work session on the signs, and then, you know, we have a, a timeline here with the land code rewrite, so I just, I, I question, maybe you don't know the answer, will there be a work session? And then perhaps with the, the code rewrite, things change, and then we're back to a work session, and Planning Commission makes the recommendation, and then it gets sent back for another work session. You know, I just don't want staff to have to go to extra work, I mean, unless council sees fit, I, I can't make that determination for them.
And, uh, I can't schedule, uh, council sessions, personally. Um, I can recommend, what I had recommended, um, was a process where you all would look at a section, have your opportunity to comment, then we would go to a council work session, if they have time, if they have an opening, just to give a status update on the sections you discussed at that last meeting. And then, um, they would have the opportunity to provide you with some input while this whole process is still going on, before you talk about the next section in the next meeting. We'd kind of be all coming through the process together, and I'm hoping that's what we'll be able to do. Um, at the minimum, I'm hoping that you will eventually be able to have a joint work session, um, which was, um, originally in our plan, as far as the contract with the consultant. So I don't know, you know, they got a lot of budget things coming up and, and some, lots of things to deal with, so, I mean, it'd be great if they depend on you to work through all these details and get into the nitty-gritty, and then provide them with a good recommendation, but, um, so we'll get some more feedback on, on what they're able to do.
Okay. Great. Anybody else have questions? Go ahead, Kelly. Okay. Thank you. Seeing we know, have no other business on the agenda for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Barbara with a second by Austin that we adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
I had the what?
Oh, uh.
Yeah, we're, we're back the other way.
What?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. You want my little light industrial?
No, I got that.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yes.
I may need your.
Well.
I might watch some sausage.
Okay, I need a quick.
Y'all have good evening.
Can I get that flying?
Yeah, sorry.
I was like, wait, what?